Kevin, how do you know this?
She came in because...
You know how?
I think so.
Are you asking for a question?
I'm still saying...
Good.
Kevin, how was it with the...
Kevin, how do you know this?
She came in because...
Kevin, how do you know this?
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 How did you know this?
They started by doing an auction.
Are we the first to tell you this?
If you know how.
I think so.
Right, I know it is.
Hi, how are you doing?
I think so.
Paulson, you spoke about that.
Hi, how are you doing?
Are you just giving a oral presentation and go out and power boy?
Brevity is the soul of wit.
One of the poets on the road was...
We think they were able to build some papers.
Well, I guess...
Oh, you're the English people, not me.
I was an English speaker.
David, this is April or April.
How are you doing?
I'm doing well so far.
Because you never...
You ready for tomorrow?
Yes, good.
Amy, how are you?
You're the show. I'm just gonna be here as a helper, right?
Yeah, I think.
It's gonna be in town, I think, too.
Okay, very good.
I'll order the April regular meeting of the school committee for Minnigan Regional High School. Do we have any public who'd like to make a comment? Yes, sir. Please come up, state your name, where you're from, and you have up to three minutes.
Are you gonna sing the national anthem?
Is that required?
Just make sure you get all what happened.
Edward Galupa, I'm from Stone. I just wanted to discuss my point of view on the 16N, the plebiscite vote for the school building project. If you take a assumption that, and I haven't, nobody's done the polling, but let's assume that 55% of the population in the towns that are voting are in favor of the building project. If we then divide that vote into 10, go to the town meetings with the appropriate numbers of people who show up at town meetings, 200, 400, depending on the town, you end up with a 40% chance that you will lose that vote. And the reason is, is that if I have 200 people voting in a town meeting and the random probability of any one person voting yes is 55%, I have roughly a 9% chance that I will lose. Now, that's not very much, but if I accumulate that, I only have to lose once in the 10 towns, and you end up with a 40% chance of disenfranchising the majority of the voters. If you take the ensemble of the towns as a plebiscite vote, and you have a 55% margin, I don't know, the chance of losing that vote is essentially zero. So by not taking, if you take off the 16N chance, you are effectively disenfranchising the voters. Now, it doesn't work the other way. Let's say you have a 55% chance of losing. You have a 55% chance of losing, in the town meetings, you will lose. You have a very high probability of losing. But if you went to the 16N, you would also lose. So it's not reciprocal. It's only an unreasonable burden that you're imposing on the towns, on the community that supports the building project, assuming it was a 55% of the population, by separating itself. And you can imagine, if you had the requirement for passing the budget at the school committee, that it didn't pass by a majority, but you divided the school committee into groups of three, and you had to have a majority in every one of those groups of three, it would be very challenging for you to get your work. So I think it's an unreasonable burden. I understand that there are political reasons that towns like to believe of themselves as individuals, and every town's like to think of themselves as independent, and things like that. And those are true political concerns, but mathematically, you put yourself in a very tough situation.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Very well then, we move on to the chair's report. There is no chair's report today. It's a good day. We move on to the principal's report. Principal Dillon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In front of you, you have a proposal for a maximum of 10 seasons to travel to the Antiquities from June for a overland fishing field trip. What can happen here is any questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Any discussion? No, we can't join this field here.
I already have.
I don't even go fishing, but I looked at the details and looked pretty excited when you did. So I'm gonna beg you to vote all in favor of the motion on the table. Please raise your hand. That passes unanimously, very much, like it is. Target review update?
Mr. Blake? I am here. Mr. Blake is our director of curriculum instruction and assessment. He'll be gonna give you an update as to a scheduled target review by the Department of Education. Welcome, Mr. Blake. Thanks, Ed. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Minnigan was selected to be audited, a targeted audit by the Center for District and School Accountability. And this audit will take place May 9th at L.L. The CDSA's mandate is to review and report the efforts of schools to improve the academic achievement of their students, and also to help schools strengthen a cycle of continuous improvement. We submitted voluminous documents as part of the self-assessment process for the six standards of the review. And after that process, the state decided that our review would focus on three student-centered strands or standards. The following strands are curriculum assessment, excuse me, curriculum instruction is number one, assessment is two, and student support is number three. And we, once we found out that those are going to be three areas of the targeted review, we submitted even more documentation to support the work that we're doing here at the school. The CDSA monitors and reviews the efforts of schools. They are charged by state law to review no fewer than 40 schools per year. Thirty of those schools are what we call underperforming schools, they're in level four, level five. The remaining schools, the remaining 10 schools, are high performing schools. Four schools are chosen at random. And we have not had a review of this nature in about 10 years. The last time we had a review, this type was called the EQA, the Office of Educational Quality Insurance, which was a separate entity. And after 2008, that entity was dissolved, and the CDSA was folded into an arm of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So that's about it. The team will be here. I know who they are, we can supply with that information if you like. Unfortunately, none of them is experienced or has any kind of work experience with permanent technical education. That's not a minimum standard requirement. They just have to be experienced educators, which is too bad. But we use the same standard for vocational schools as they do for non-vocational schools. They try to be consistent with the expectations. So mainly, it's a review that will focus on our NCAS performance. And we're ready for it. I think we're coming off very strongly with our NCAS scores. We improved in every single discipline, in every single subcategory, and we exceeded our expectations in English and science. And we're working our way back up to where we should be in math. So there will be interviews with constituent groups conducted by this team. Ed will probably invite members of this body to participate and inform. They'll talk to teachers, they'll talk to representatives from the faculty association, they'll talk to parents, probably special education parents, and they'll speak with students. And it'll probably take about two and a half days. Can I ask you any questions?
Now, Bill, is this gonna be as exhaustive and exhausting as the EQA review was, or is this a little bit more reasonable and come down with that?
Well, I asked that question, Jeff, and just to editorialize for a second, that EQA process was the most disruptive process I experienced in my career. And she alluded to this. Pat Williams is the lead investigator for this most recent round, and she was on the team the previous time, and she assured me it was gonna be a different process. It's targeted, so they, you know, we're all level two schools, so level one and level two schools do not have to report out on all six of the standards. They're just, they're trying something to be fair, trying to, this is the first year they're doing it this way. She didn't say it was gonna be friendly, but that's my word. I'd like, hopefully, to believe it'll be a little bit friendly. The State Department of Education knows very little about what we do in career and technical education, so I'm confident that they will leave here well educated about what we do and how well we do it, particularly if they visit the vocational programs and see that kind of construction. We're also giving our 12th grade end of course assessments that week. I informed them about this, but they decided to come anyway. So it's a tough standard. I'd like to think it's gonna be a little friendlier.
Well, I certainly hope so. I remember the last one. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Do you anticipate any particular areas where there might be problems?
Only in disruption, I think. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the teachers' workday being messed up. And I'm hoping, we're trying to keep it away from the teachers. We're trying not to bother the teachers with this, other than to encourage them to continue to do a good job they do in the classroom. We'll see. I'm not overly worried about it. We submitted many, many hundreds of documents. My concern is that they weren't reviewed, and that's perexcise. And I was told that I will have an opportunity to weigh in after the process, it's all about my thoughts on that, which also includes the fact that I don't think that's necessarily legit to use the same expectations for two different kinds of schools. We have a different vision, and we have a different means of measuring success that is not available to the so-called comprehensive version.
Mr. Blake, why would you say that they weren't reviewed? What made, what led you to believe that the information that you sent to them was not reviewed?
Well, she just said she hadn't received the, I put it on her thumb drive, and I asked her if she'd received it yet. She said she hadn't, but she was going to make a will with them all in to get...
And the other question that I have for you, if I understood correctly, or correct me if I'm misinformed, is that are these people that are coming not folks that have come before? They're different modern people?
The lead investigator, Pat Williams, was here the last time, and I was told they tried to maintain some sort of continuity if they were able to do it. The last team that came to the school, they had two pretty well-known vocational administrators on it.
So there's just one person, the same.
Just one person.
All right, well, is this some continuity?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mononius, Assistant Director of Strategic Analysis Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, you members of the committee. On pages 17 through 22, we provide the third quarter financial statements. Basically, pages 17 and 18 provide the expenditure report summary, and it notes the projections that we anticipate spending between now and the end of the fiscal year, and some factors on 7th and May drives that have variances. One correction, I note that on page 17, under function code 1230, you see in the anticipated column 100,000, you see in the comments column 80,000 for district-wide ballot. I'd like to correct that note, it should be 100,000 dollars. That's been set aside in the event we need to go to district-wide ballot. Outside of that, summary sheet on page P18, at the bottom of the projected balance, shows an operating surplus of about $250,763 we're projecting as of this date. And the subsequent two pages that follow just provide the detail by salary and non-salary items. And then on the remaining two pages, the analysis of the statement involving accounts. I don't see anything that causes concern as of the third quarter results. And we did, the finance subcommittee did review these reports off the comments, and then the appropriate amendments were read prior to being submitted to the school committee. So that is the update on the third quarter financial statements. I'm not...
We have a few questions.
Yes?
I did have a couple of questions this morning. So I see this 5,000 here on page 18. It says severance payout early retirement incentives. But who, we had people that we, what?
The district offered an early retirement notification incentive, so there were folks that did take advantage of that. We also had employees, full-year employees, that have left employment, so they were entitled to unpaid vacation time, so that's what those cost associated.
Okay. So then, on the bottom here, it's 9,300, it says tuition, non-public school. What's that about? And then underneath that is payment to collaboratives.
It's basically students that we, that require special services, that we send to these private special education support schools for 45-day placements, temporary placements, typically for evaluation, those types of services.
Okay, so again, I don't understand why the student doesn't go back to their district.
Some of it's, they're short-term, they're short-term services. If they're any, if we find that they're much longer than that, and we can't service them, then they would return to this subdivision. These are just typically short-term evaluations.
So this is short-term, so, see, I'm confused, because this is a pretty substantial amount of money they pay to involve the tuitioners. So they pay the tuition, and then we pay this out?
Depending on the student, if it's an out-of-district student, it would be tuition, if it's an in-district student, it would be...
Right, so that was a concern. And then I see that there's substitutes on the, this is on page 17. Actually, well, it did catch my eye, because the leadership services are pretty hot. But I did see here that there were substitutes, there's five long-term substitutes. Do we know what positions those are?
I think we have a physical education teacher that's out. We have a math, yeah, there's three maternity teachers that are out. Electrical...
And then two medical. There's two medicals.
Okay. And then there's one FTE, unfilled position? And that's for paraprofessionals that are in the classroom? How do we get around that?
No, those aren't paid. Those are, this is some special education staff. We had a instructor...
Paralys, I mean paraprofessional, so.
What did I say? I'm sorry. It's a teacher.
Oh, it's a teacher, okay. Because it says paraprofessional and assistant. And then there's a unfilled FTE for guidance council, justice council?
Well, I beg your pardon, Mary Ellen. You were referring to line 23, 30, paraprofessionals and assistants. I'm sorry, I was nodding. Yeah, that was, that was, that was an A position.
Okay, and what's an IEP transition work? Isn't that, wouldn't that come under the director of special education?
It is special education services for students that are coming in. We're doing a meeting with the ascending districts to understand what their needs are to develop the IEP transition process.
So is that a teacher that does that?
Yes.
Okay. And then...
It's on, it's on an hourly, it's on an hour...
So is this something that's built to municipal management?
I believe that would be eligible.
Of the transition plan?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's...
I'm not sure about that.
Can we find out? Can you let me know?
Sure.
Okay, that would be great. And then we know, we don't have a full-time nurse?
We do, we do have a full-time nurse.
High, not contract. We have a high in-house, or we have a...
We had a vacancy that we...
Okay.
We need to remove it. Beginning of the school year, we had a vacancy.
Okay, and this pupil transportation is in district of the big yellow box?
Yes.
And we have a security full-time person, that's contracted, isn't it?
We have partial contracted services, and we even have, we don't have a full-time security person, but we have staff that works under the theme of providing some security services.
Okay, so that's just one that she's gonna get back to you, and then get back to you very much.
Kevin, if you'd be so kind, could you walk me through the numbers for tuition revolving?
Sure. The fiscal, we close fiscal '15, the balance of 5.5 million dollars. We collected for our first cycle of 2.5 million dollars, and we projected revenue based on the bills that will be going out later this month, we expect we're collecting officially 2.5 million dollars. As part of our revenue plan, we put in the expended column, we actually transferred a fund of district budget of 5.9 million, so we're projecting a balance at the end of the year of 4.6 million dollars.
Does that, does the beginning balance of 5.5 mil and 4.6 mil at the end of the year, have any points seem high to you?
No, we reconciled it to the revenue plan, and it works out perfectly that all tuition is applied. The only variance that's in there is not our tuition attributed out of district students, it's tuition that we received from the, from the collaborative. So they, that's also classified as a kind of, the scene collaborative is about $60,000. That's also included, but that's the only balance that stays in that tuition, and the balance moves into the subsequent year revenue.
Okay, I have that in accounting, so maybe you could unwind that a little bit for me, because what I see here, if you start it with 5.5, you're ending with 4.6, you're going to go through another revenue cycle of 5 million dollars. Then going into the next year, there'll be another, at the end of next year, there'll be another 4, 5, 6 million dollars?
Yeah, the 4.6 million reflects what we projected in our revenue plan as a decrease due to the decline in out-of-district tuition students. So the balance that's, that's, that's in that revolving account has June 30, is will then be applied to the, to revenue for fiscal year '17.
So should that be in comfort funds?
It will not be till the end of the year, once we realize what it is, and then it will be applied to fiscal year '17.
Then you move it all, okay, thank you.
Budget transfer.
Mr. Chairman, provided at your table, the CV is a combination of bid results and a request for a budget transfer. We issued three, three bid packages over the last month. One for site improvement work, and the other for leasing space at Energy House and the Childcare Center. Looking at the first one, the site improvement project, this is the work that we talked about. We repaved the access road and the perimeter roads, as well as renovate the main front plaza area for ADA accessibility. So we bid that work. We received three bids. The low bidder was Sunshine Paying with Johnson, 385,000. In order to fund that work, we'd like to request a transfer of 425,000 from the accounts that are listed on the memo, 225,000 from the health and life insurance account, $50,000 from the health insurance retiree account, and 150,000 for teachers' salaries. Those have all been incorporated in the third quarter. Those assumptions are all based on the results that were reviewed in the third quarter operating statements. And we've also provided a contingency for additional work. There was an alternate that was included as part of the bid for an additional $40,000. That's an application between the final coat and the base coat on the access road that'll prevent cracking. This is only a fix that's intended to last for five years, given we anticipated the project moving forward. And to the extent that we can identify funds within the existing line item, we'd like to go forward with that additional $40,000. Our engineering is recommending that we do that. So I think between the contingency and some, and some balances that we may have in the capital account, we may be able to accomplish a full sculpted work.
So you're looking for somebody to move the motion on the bottom of the first interpay of the handout that's at the table, that's the motion you're interested in?
Yes, sir.
Great. So, my question is, I think that you just actually touched on it. So this work is, we do have a problem with, obviously, with both the plaza and the access road.
Correct.
And this is a five-year solution, so we're not gonna be wasting a lot of money that that work may have to be redone?
That's correct. It's the repair catch basin, it's a partial overlay. In some of the areas, they need a full, a full-depth overlay, but the engineers are aware of what the long-term plan is, and they provide us with a recommendation on...
And this can't wait, though.
Correct.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other questions? Ken?
Ken, just to make sure I understand, the transfers here are already baked into these variances?
No, they're not.
There is, there is positive number in each of those accounts that would allow the variances, but that will end up reducing those variances that are shown on this variance report.
That's correct.
Eric?
Just to add that during the recent finance committee meeting, Kevin talked about this with us, in terms of the cost benefit of doing the work at all right now, how important it was to be able to support the weight and rumble of the construction vehicles coming through, as well as to have something that would last until we have the new school in
All in favor of the motion on the table? What do you favor, extensions? One extension, and that's it.
Great. Thank you very much. The second, the second memo refers to the leasing of the childcare classroom space. That space is currently occupied by MIT in a subcontract with Bright Berets to provide childcare services. They, they will be moving into a new building, and they're working on that transition now. So we issued the RFP early on to see if we could make sure that we have a smooth transition. The current lease expired is on October 11. Uh, the, uh, current lease expired is on October 31st. We issued the, uh, we issued the RFP and we received one bid, um, from the collaborative learning project, uh, currently doing business is the Tremont School. Uh, they're, they're an independent private school for fifth to 12th grade. And the bid, uh, the bid results were listed on the memo, uh, in year one, they're bidding $10,833 per month, year two, $12,500 per month, year three, $14,167 per month. The bid was structured so that there'd be two one-year options at this, at the, uh, at the discretion of the district. So the bid, not the year four, $14,583 per month and, and the fifth year, $15,000 per month. All of the, uh, the proposal meant that requirements of the RFP will be awarded the bid to Tremont School.
And you don't require a vote, it just is for information purposes?
Correct, the, uh, chief of K O N office can issue that, uh, can issue that contract.
I think that Mr. Wise has a question.
I'm sorry.
Kevin, in order of magnitude, how does this, um, rate schedule compare to what was previously being prepared? Is it largely the same up down?
It's down. Um, the current, the current tenant's paying $15,000 a month now, uh, so, so it is down. So we'll, so we're going to experience a bit of a loss over the first three years and over the first four years if we continue to, uh, the, uh. And the, the final, uh, final memo is regarding the Energy House office space currently occupied by an association school superintendent. This two would be a renewed lease of about, uh, three years with two one-year renewal options. The only, uh, entity to request a property RFP was the, uh, mass association school superintendent and they bid $2,600 per month, uh, for the free term and then in year four and five, they did $2,800 per month. They had a parent tenant that currently paying $2,500 per month, so we will move forward with, uh, executing that lease effective May 1, 2016. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's report.
Uh, ask the, uh, school committee to make a motion to vote not to participate in the school choice program. Um, this is an annual vote taken by the school district. You may recall this particular school choice program reimburses the district $5,000 per pupil. Um, we have had a vote of no every year, I think, since I've been here. Uh, that $5,000 number has not changed since 1993.
Any discussion? David?
Am I correct that, um, for each choice student, the school would receive the chapter 70 reimbursement?
No, the chapter 70 reimbursement goes to the sending district, the $5,000 goes to the receiving district.
So you're saying it does not come to the school, it stays in the sending district?
Their chapter 70 count, those students are counted from those towns that they originate from.
It's not my understanding, but I'll, I'll reply in time. How, is this substantially different from than a tuition student? And how so?
Very substantially different, yes.
How so?
We receive, uh, on a district tuition set by the commissioner of somewhere around $18,000 per pupil versus $5,000.
How much?
Somewhere around $18,000 per pupil.
For tuition rate?
Yeah.
What's the tuition rate this year for Minuteman?
Uh, $17,556.
And what would it be next year?
Uh, approximately $16,800. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but it's an increase.
Thank you.
Yes, Mary Ellen?
Just curiosity, have you tuition, um, not tuition, transportation for the choice student? Their town pays for transportation or does it not?
Their town will pay the transportation.
Very well, then all in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. A fourteen in favor, extensions?
Can I vote yes, Ken, please?
Also zero extensions, one no vote.
The MSBA project scope and budget agreement, this is a technical requirement of MSBA, uh, requires a vote in the school committee. On pages 25 through 89, you'll see the documentation as it's been presented to us by MSBA. And you would need a motion to.
Uh, move that the superintendent and the school committee chair, the authorized officers, hereby authorized, executed, delivered to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA. The project scope and budget agreement between the district and the MSBA presented to this meeting, the agreement, and any amendments thereto as approved by the authorized officers. And to bind the district to the terms and conditions of such agreement and any amendments, all on behalf of the district.
Sorry.
This council. It's not a daily portion.
Uh, on page, on page 25, it talks about the final grant amount, it means that less than 44 million. Maybe, Eric, Kevin, does that take place, then without this determining?
We're through with module five.
Through with module five, okay, thank you.
Ken?
I think that can also take place when you're done with construction and then do the final lobby. That's what.
It'll be, uh, it could be impacted by that.
Yeah. Um, I, I have a number of questions, um, so, um, there would be, um, if we could start on page eighty-three. What is the eighty-three? Um, this is just referring back to a vote that was taken in June of 2012. Um, and under paragraph one here, it says, um, decisions on behalf of the district with respect to the school project will be made by the school committee, hacked in by and through a school building committee. As far as I know, this has never gone before the school building committee. Shouldn't this be something that the school building committee weighed in on? And, and I care less about the contractual language than lots of the attachment stuff, which is never, as a member of the school building committee, I can say, has never been discussed in the school building committee. It seems premature that we're voting on this tonight if the school building committee has never weighed in on it.
My understanding is that this is one of the statutory requirements of the school building committee's function. In other words, uh, the number of different documents that have been exers, executed by the school committee, the school building committee over the years around fees, because the feasibility study agreement itself is the one that identifies the school building committee with this, um, authority to work with the school committee. So this isn't anything that, um, Minuteman came up with. This is something that the MSBA put to us as having, um, you know, the next step that they're expecting from us. Was there a deadline on this?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
I, I want to come back to a, a second iteration of, of that, but, but as an example, on page 49, there is a proposed, oh, I'm going to lose the chance of, a proposed schedule of alternates.
A what?
A proposed schedule of alternates?
Yep.
Um, I, I remember asking both at the building committee, is there anything in here that we're submitting, uh, back in December that somebody could say, well, you guys approved this, didn't you, that we're not aware of? And I was told that as it related to the physical elements, that at that schematic design phase, they were using broad ratios and, you know, analyses and the time to hone in on the details would be during the construction. This has things like changing the floor finish from vinyl to rubber tile as an, an alternate. And, and the building committee has never had discussion number one about any of this stuff.
We have seen this at the building committee. This, this has been at the building committee. This is, this document, this information.
I remember talking about the playing field when.
All the rest of it was presented at the building, at the building committee.
It was at a building committee that I attended, I only went to a few, but I remember seeing this.
We've seen this before, but I, I, I certainly don't talk, having seen it. Um, in, in terms of the timing, um, I, I'm going to refer to a lawyer on, on this, but, um, under the representations and warranties on page 38 and 39. Under paragraph 5.2, the bottom of 38, it says, "The district is duly authorized," and we jump to the end of the second line, "to perform and consummate all track transactions contemplated by this project scope and budget agreement." And then it's, uh, 5.5 says, "This project scope and budget agreement constitutes a valid and binding obligation of the district." How can we represent that and sign this as binding if we do not yet have funding approval from our member communities?
The, the, as I understand the MSBA process, nothing is binding until module five is completed. This is their request of every project to have this information duly authorized by the bodies that are in a feasibility study agreement with them, so that when module five is completed, the project can move into module six in an efficient and timely manner.
So should the motion tonight be then, and I ask this question, I can pose it as a motion that, the motion for approval is then subject to receiving authorization for funding or?
My understanding that this motion language has been vetted by our bond council, by our district council, by MSBA council, and this is the vote that the school committee must take at this time.
So it's not really binding as much as it says it's binding?
Till you get the authorization from the.
Right. The contract we signed with MSBA, I know it was a long time ago, um, refers to this process, this part of the process, and we agreed to meet the requirements of MSBA and their process, so.
Is this? So I read this as, here's what we're committing to do, assuming everything was voted. We will live by your rules if we have our approval and get your funding.
Just as we say that, it's subject to the, the finance, I mean, it makes me nervous that we're binding the district legally to something like.
It's a sure issue, I see, unless we get approval. I don't want to go money.
My defense.
Yeah, um, this is actually an agreement between two parties and they both have obligations. The authority, uh, under this agreement has the, uh, obligation, provided conditions are met, to, uh, come across with funding. If they don't, it's a failure consideration on their part. So the two really go hand in hand. I, I don't see that this is an impediment in any way to us, uh, signing this. And can I ask just one question for understanding? On page eighty-two. This is the first time I've seen this chart. It has been cited frequently, continues to be cited, that one of the reasons we're going forward now with the building project is that we're grandfathered in at a 40% reimbursement rate and we would get 31%, um, were we not grandfathered. And both of those numbers appear on this sheet. Um, I, I certainly know that I used that 9% differential in the fall when I was, um, advocating for going forward with the building project that thinks oversight. But now, if I read this correctly, the differential isn't really 9%. The differential is 1.7% because we would get 31 base points and this property wealth factor of 7.37. And so if they didn't have the double asterix saying that we get the 40, our base reimbursement rate before incentives would really be 38.37%. Am I reading that correctly? It seems to me.
I don't read it that way. I read this as their, um, their ability to do what they said they were going to do and keep us at that 40% rate. I haven't seen other projects, reimbursement rate calculation forms lately, but the property wealth factor, I know is unique. I don't know how it plays out in other projects, but I think they did what they had to do to keep us at 40%.
I understand they grandfathered the same. I, I'm told that the property wealth factor is, is always a part of the, the calculation, um, which makes me think that the differential wasn't really 9%. It would have been 1.7%.
We didn't write that, I don't know. They would have to answer that.
Can you ask me to answer that? Is that real? Who will take, who will take responsibility for that, to report that? Right, can you send that in email? I want to answer a question.
Yeah, I mean, please, yeah.
Thank you.
Mary Ellen?
Um, I did, we talked on this, um, but, you know, these charts, these scans, I can't read them all. My site is not that, that good, but even if to blow these up, I still can't see them. So the, the charts, uh, is there any way that you can get from them, a larger, like a 11 by 17? All of these pages here, I have no idea what they're talking about. Fifty-three?
If you, if you look at it on your computer, Mary Ellen, which I did today.
Can I just stop you? I want from paper, because to look at my computer, to blow it up, then I lose track of the problem. But thank you, I need a try.
Have we, uh, seen these charts before? Or we have had them printed out larger at some point? Because I recall.
There are a lot of recent papers that.
So, yeah, but we have had it before.
Okay, so they can do it again, thank you.
No further discussion, then move forward. But once again, remember, we are approving the next, uh, necessary step in order to move forward with the project, this contract with the MSBA, and as we follow the MSBA, it's their way or the highway. So all in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. What do you in favor, extensions? One extension and the motion passes.
Thank you. At your table, under 6C, you'll see a chart updating you as to the status of town meeting in regards to the approval of our budget, approval of 16D, or non-disapproval, and any debt exclusion information that we have. As of this day, we have five towns that have approved our FY17 budget. Uh, five towns have either approved or passed over the bonding. Uh, there was only one debt exclusion vote, uh, which approved our bonding in Lincoln, 174 to 112, even though Lincoln is party. Obviously, uh, May 2nd is a big day and, um, where the rest of the towns will be weighing in, so in about 30 days, we will know where we're at with that. Um, on 16N, uh, I've got a lot of opportunity to discuss and, and think about and understand what the MSBA's, uh, failed local vote, um, policies are and how they would impact us. And I provided some of that information to, um, at the table. But, um, I'm looking at this page now, which is a narrative of, that's been brought together through various pieces, but it describes the failed local vote. It's on the second page of your, think it is, isn't it? Yeah, at your table, you'll see. At your table, you'll see this. It says failed local vote.
Yeah.
That's a review after reviewing the policies that basically I'll take you to... My feeling is, and my understanding is, that the hundred and twenty day deadline for local appropriation that was set by the MSBA, which ends up being, after I spoke with them about holidays and stuff, May twenty-sixth. If we do not have local approval by that day, we must submit to the MSBA a plan. So if you look at paragraph two, "In the event the district fails to approve funding for a proposed new Minuteman by May twenty-sixth pursuant to the failed vote policy, by no later than ten business days following the failed vote, the district would have to submit to the MSBA a plan that presents the vote results, that explains our understanding of the failure, and then sets forth the district's plan to remedy the failed vote and a suggested timeline." At that point, MSBA would consider that plan. So regardless of the vote that I've been pushing for in regards to a sixteen N, contingent upon failure, even if we had that sixteen N vote, it would not change the district's requirement to submit a plan to MSBA. And furthermore, in their failed vote policy, in paragraph three, the other concern that I've been reflecting on is that they say, "If, however, the district decides to pursue a project with a scope different than the project's scope already approved on that date of January twenty-seventh, the district would have to submit a new statement of interest." We would essentially be out of the process. So this idea that some communities have been asking me about is, well, let's just renovate, but it's past. We either build a new school or we're out. And we either get, my feeling now, these are my opinions, my feeling now is that we either get this thing approved by town meeting over the next thirty days or not. And I am very concerned about not spending enough energy getting the district votes approved in town meeting, and that we waste time at this meeting or in other meetings. We waste energy or thought in thinking that a district-wide ballot is our final solution. It may happen. It may need to happen. And certainly, if we fail at one of these town meeting votes, it will be approached with MSBA, but there is no guarantee from MSBA. And there have been five communities that have failed to get approval. Two of them were removed from the pipeline. Two subsequently got approval, and one has got a pending vote approving their... So that's like a fifty-fifty split. And to take forty-four million dollars and let it roll on the red or the black, although Mr. DeLuca would tell me the odds better than I can, they're not good odds. So I think we have to focus our time and effort on getting town meeting approval or non-disapproval on all sixteen towns. Therefore, the fact remains that if any town should disapprove the March fifteenth vote of the school committee, this MSBA submission is required because we cannot meet the May twenty-six deadline. The contingent vote under sixteen N is moot, and I therefore recommend that it not be adopted and no vote be taken tonight.
Therefore, if there's no major objection, I'm not going to press further to the vote today. Chairman.
I was just going to ask, is there anything that we, the school committee, can do to help move this along to a less, you know, is there any...
Well, I think the twelve remaining towns are the... The interest gets absolutely fortable.
Yeah, I sent to the ten towns that are in the school committee, the work that Conford did, and I was extremely impressed with the work that Conford did, with what you did, your leadership as a school committee member. What the selectmen did is their work was also representing the building committee, and they were at almost every single building committee. Conford has been at the table at almost every single meeting, and you're commended for that. The finance committee was involved. They understood the project. They've been here, they've spent time talking. They were involved in the process. That's what we all need to do, especially those towns that tend to remain in it, is to be engaged. If you haven't been engaged, I would say shame on you, but I think more importantly, I think those towns that haven't been engaged need to come to the table. In one respect, I've said we'd have meetings and emails requesting people to come. They fall into a empty black hole. So what we need to do is get together as school committee members of those districts that are sitting in and really work together with your town. Make sure that they really understand the information and make sure they understand the correct information. And I think if we do that, we're going to get to yes in our communities. I see no reason why we won't get to yes. As a matter of fact, following the selectman meetings, when they got together, we were told they were going to get to yes if we had a new regional agreement, that we all understood. So we can't have changing of minds. We can't have that. We need to work together on a positive basis to get this through. I received a statement that maybe it's a bad investment. The bad investment is saying no. The bad investment is doing a repair project on our own. That's the bad investment. And there are numerous reasons that I could give, and I think anyone else could give on that one. The good investment is to go ahead with this project. So that would be my original...
So basically, it's the people who are, do not understand what is really going on and have to be, we have to convince them to take the time necessarily to show them what the actual facts of the ground are. And unfortunately, there are numerous people who just have not been in member towns, have not been involved in this project, who have not decided not to take the time to understand it. And I think that the key is to get the people who have not been involved and to get them either down here at Minuteman or with a group with Ford or Ed or whatnot, to actually focus on the issue, to show them the consequences of a failed project, which will cost them a lot more and whatnot. I think that that's the way to go. Each community has its own challenges, and I'm sure that you're more than aware of. Some of us have easier time, like I do, in either, because they've been strongly involved and are well aware what's happening. Other communities have not been as much involved, and it's harder to, there's no movement, it's hard to get, because of inertia, to get them moving, but you know, but the time is due, the top is, the clock is ticking, and sometimes that gets people to focus more than previously, hopefully.
I can just add, we're not alone. We're being watched, the state. I've been talking to state representatives, both officials on the legislature. This project is being watched, and being watched very carefully in terms of the support that we're going to get. So I think that's the other thing to consider. If you have other projects that are out there, you need to think about this project now. Carrie.
Thanks, Ford. I've heard, and he told me that in an email, I said, "I did not do it alone," and that's absolutely true. Doctor, we had not just one, but two people from Conford who were on the building committee. And we were given a lot of opportunity over the course of the last year and a half to talk with the finance committee, with the board of the selectmen, of course, which is covered in the paper and broadcast on the local cable station. But I also want to say, it was very helpful that the moderator allowed us, where we scheduled the article so that the budget article came immediately prior to the building article, so I could talk about a lot of good things about Minuteman and how it functions and what it does for students, and then move on after that had been passed to talk about the building project, and here's how we can get better and follow that, and we'll go into the details. But I also want to say that, how many of you have seen the video that Ed did with the town manager in Acton, interview Kevin, it's on the cable station? That's a really good half-hour show. It gets into the nitty-gritty of a lot of the points that have been covered, confusion and confusion about this project. And it would be great if that could be referred to your own local cable TV, get it in the newspaper, and it's going to be rebroadcast, or they can get it on demand, I expect, in Acton. That is a really good examination and discussion with the issues.
We send that to all the cable...
You did, you did. It was excellent.
If I could just follow up on that. Tomorrow Dover Cable is coming up here. They're going to spend a half-hour show on the project and going through it, and then it'll be shown. And tomorrow night, we're having an open warrant hearing just on Minuteman because it's a special town meeting, which is also televised. All those things that you need to do are going to help educate your people. So I think those are the things that you need to organize and do. Pretty easy, it's a phone call, they'll get it done.
Do you need a script? Do you need a script?
If you want to hear it, you're welcome.
Does anyone answer your question, at least on this end?
So I'm wondering if people want to, they're nervous about doing it, can they call you, Carrie, or can they call you? I'd be happy to read scripts. I don't know the personalities in your room.
No, but just to kind of dazzle them.
That's another, I met with the chairman of our finance committee and partner from our board of selectmen about ten days before town meeting. We did an outline of what needed to be said, looked at the slides that we had been provided. We made a few tweaks to them to address concerns or questions that they had heard during the hearings. And then we shared our comments so that we could all edit one another, and we got a lot of good compliments from people who said they didn't know, they never realized, you know, this is, this is great, so...
But help is, on this, can be generally available from Carrie, or Ford, or Ed, or Kevin.
Steve's a great resource as well.
Steve. So those are all people that you can ask if you run into a particular situation or you have an opportunity, you want to take advantage of it, and want information, and you want one of these fellows to come and assist. They're all more than capable of helping you roll the ball forward. What they don't have is the local information about your communities. That they don't have. You have that information. But what they can do is, once you talk to them about your local situation, can help you move the ball forward, especially if you have some of these intransigent people that don't understand the school, or don't want to understand the school, or have just not chosen not to spend the time needed to understand the issues as the town. That would be my advice as a contractor. Chairman.
And I should say that, even though Carrick failed in Lincoln, all of the other people, Steve, Kevin, and Ed, I think I forget someone, were all very helpful to put it together, whatever we could do.
Dave.
Just real quick, I apologize for backtracking, but looking at, well, first of all, there's not going to be a sixteen N vote tonight. Is that what you said?
My advice is for there not to be a sixteen N vote tonight and to not schedule one at this time.
So that's in table?
It's effectively being tabled for the foreseeable future until something changes.
And that's based on these two documents that we're just now receiving, one on the school building guidelines that we received tonight, and also on the failed local vote. Correct?
Correct.
That's the reasoning that we're not doing it? Yes or no?
The reasoning we're not taking this vote?
Because of the new conditions that are here?
Yes.
Okay.
Let the superintendent pose his question.
Just let me ask, you can answer this question at the same time. This failed local vote, three or four paragraphs, is that part of the school building guidelines vote, or what's the source for this document?
The source is from the MSBA.
Okay, is that online?
Yeah. And there's a URL at the top of the page.
Not on this page, but it has to do with school building guidelines, so this failed vote is part of that. Play it here.
They're, yeah, they're related to one of them.
I know they're related, but I think it's got the same source.
Yeah.
But if I go there, I'll get this document.
You'll get the regulations.
That's fine, thank you.
It says, "Policy statement regarding the impact of MSBA on city, town, or regional schools." That's available on the MSBA website.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of comments and questions. First, I would echo what Ford said regarding the reasoning behind of coming up with a new, I support the building project, I want to see it built. I want to see it happen with MSBA funding. I undertook the work that I did compared to the amended agreement precisely because I thought the best way to achieve that would be to get the sixteen towns to vote openly advocating for it within their community. In fact, when we had our negotiations, I think you were, what you and Ford were at the last one, I made the point that we weren't simply there to try to get a grudging agreement, we were there to try to get the selectmen and other town representatives who were there to become advocates for it in their communities. And the individuals at that meeting helped to do that. I have no reason to think they'll do anything but that. Obviously, they don't speak for the whole community. Having said that, we as a group tried, you know, we listened to all the concerns of the various communities. Belmont had a concern, Arlington had a concern, Lexington. We listened to all of them, and we tried to incorporate in that new agreement solutions to their concerns. I'm hopeful that people who were in that meeting and part of that effort will be able to go back and explain to their town members of why this agreement was in their interest and why building the schools is in their interest. So I support Ford's comments and his exhortation of the album, and try to get the communities to approve it. I also think that getting it approved under sixteen D is by far the best way to do it for the long-term entity of the district. And I'm gratified that the chair and the superintendent have pulled the sixteen N vote from the table tonight, because I think it will help get it approved by sixteen D, particularly due to the comments that Belmont has made over the past few weeks. Now my question, and it relates to what Dave said. When did we learn about the MSBA policy that's set out here? And I ask that because we've been talking about sixteen D votes and sixteen N votes for as long as I've been on the committee since September. And I have to believe that this committee has been considering the possibility of sixteen N vote going back at least two years. I say that because I was dealing with Dan Matthews about concerning the old agreement two years ago, and that was always the end result if sixteen D failed. And I think it's important to know, why is it? We're only learning about this at seven thirty on April twelfth of the day that we were asked originally to vote for it. Why are we learning about this tonight?
You recall that the MSBA gave us a deadline of June thirty, and that deadline was a point of confusion for a number of folks under a number of topics as over the last year. In conversations with MSBA and council, we clarified the position of that deadline in relation to their vote of the twenty-seventh. And that clarification was this, you know, the last couple of weeks?
Why didn't we get that clarification months ago, when we knew that we were working for us first a sixteen D vote and then a sixteen N vote? These aren't new policies, are they?
That's my knowledge.
Okay, so why didn't we do this months ago? And that's not, that's not an... And that's not, that's not an idle question because what we've been informed by the chair is that, and by the superintendent she said, is that if we don't succeed with the 16D vote within the next few weeks, we may lose forty-five million dollars of state funding. Whereas if we had known what this policy was months ago, and it appears to me intimately susceptible of being known, then we might well have done things on a different schedule. So why are we finding out now? That's a point of thought.
Well, I don't think we would have done things on a different schedule.
That's not, that's not the question I ask.
I clarified it, I clarified it with MSBA this week.
I still not entirely clear what we would do if the 16D fails. What, I know essentially, but in reality, what does that mean that we try to re-form it or reform the process of 16D and vote through 16D again, or do we still have 16 end as an option?
We would still have 16 end as an option.
But what do you anticipate doing?
I would ask the chair to call a special meeting and vote to authorize the debt under 16 end.
So that's essentially the outcome?
I have to, I have to make the comment here. First is, if D fails, I think that moving forward under these rules and with other issues that are involved would be extremely unlikely. And I say that because one of the reasons why I'm willing to take this vote off, you know, there are always challenges when you move forward when there's ambiguity. One of the reasons I'm willing to take this off is that it's come to my attention that there may be town officials who would like to be able to say no to the project and say no to it and then be able to say, but we're voting no because what we want to do is we want to let the people decide, let it go to the 16 end process. In other words, they want to say no to the process, to the project, but they don't want to take responsibility for the consequences of failure and use the possibility of going to 16 end as a means of saying, well, we're voting no because we want to give the people an opportunity to decide. And I don't know if that's true or not, I've heard it from a few sources that that may be some of the thinking. I don't like that. I like it when people take responsibility for their vote. So to me, you know, there's maybe some ambiguity swirling around whether we should go forward with this or not with respect to that process, which we could engage, we could engage in that process. And by the way, we might have made that deadline anyways if we didn't have the delay. If we had taken the, if we had done as we originally chose to do and in February taken the vote to move ahead with the project then, in February, then we would have had time to do 16 end as well within our timeframe. You see that? Because we delayed that.
Unless you force towns to take a special, do a special town meeting, and I think we agree.
Well, at that special town meeting that they already had for the agreement, remember originally what we were going to do is we were going to do both things at the same time. We were going to vote for the agreement and then at the same time vote for the project in February. And that was our schedule that we had originally agreed to, right, when I said what my condition was for moving forward. And we decided not to do that. We decided to delay it to regular town meeting and we hadn't done that. And that had failed in February, then we would have had time by May twenty-third to have the district quiet ballot, right? It would have, and May twenty-third would have been no problem.
Are you asking me right?
No, I know it's right. We would have had time to do it.
Because we went for this one.
Yeah, you will have, you will have an opportunity. But we didn't do that. We went to the, what the selectmen wanted to do, even though I know that this was putting this process going the other route at risk. So we took them at their word, we said, okay, we went ahead with it in that fashion. We had the special town meeting where we originally were going to take the vote for the bonding as well, which we didn't, we delayed it for now. And I just think it's important that the people who are going to be voting at the regular town meeting not be able to say, well, if it fails here, we don't have to take responsibility for what's going to happen because it's going to go to the people and let them decide. And so to me, the big issue here is forcing the people at town meeting to take responsibility for it one way or another. So my thinking is that if this fails at town meeting, I think the project is probably going to be dead. That's mine.
Jeff, can I just finish my question?
Please.
So just to really be sure of what I, of what I heard, so the districts plan to remedy the failed vote in a suggestive timeline or such already, that would be 16 end, not something else, is that correct? Is that what we're talking about?
That's my opinion, but it would be a discussion at the school committee.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Alice?
At the beginning of the discussion, you had asked for this magical labor to, since you were recommending that we're going on 16 and so, and instead focus the energy on how to pass the building project at the town meetings at the debt exclusion. And I think the biggest issue that I see is the debt exclusion votes because there's, it's much more difficult to affect a debt exclusion vote than it is to affect a town meeting. There's a lot of unknown information, should people go to the debt exclusion vote, they're not always getting informed about the process and the language that's on the ballot, sometimes confusing as well, sometimes think of, you know, responsibility to the entire debt, which is different town, portions of debt, so forth. So what are we going to be doing to assist those towns that are doing the debt exclusion to educate the townspeople?
Well, I think that we tend to, we can't extend any public funds on that at all. That would just be what the school committee members want to do in their district with whatever assistance they can get from us. It's a much harder thing to do, is you have to talk to the whole population without being able to spend any money. And the people and the officials of the town may not be willing to spend any effort to have that communications go forth. So I think that that's a town by town thing that you're going to have to face and decide when we figure out how many of these votes are going to be and where they're going to be or not going to be all the time. And it's going to happen, thankfully it will be a handful so that you can deal with it. I think that Ford will.
Conference, tomorrow, Thursday night, Thursday ahead.
We're not doing debt exclusion.
I think what happens is as we go through these processes, we learn something every day and we don't have all the facts and we don't have all the facts from the MSBA, or we perhaps would have liked them, we maybe haven't had taken the time to do our total research, talking to lawyers, talking to everybody. And sometimes people bring up questions to us that raise a question that we hadn't thought of. And just a couple of days ago, as a matter of fact, I got a call from a selectman in another town and they were talking about N. And they were saying that they're not sure you should consider this, Ford. And I said, why? He said, well, go to your regional agreement. Go to your new regional agreement, section four I, incurring debt. And what would happen if you had, went to N and you had a vote and the town said no? Majority of the town said they don't want to do it. Are they going to be obligated for the debt after that? I don't believe they are. And I thought, well, then why would we do N? I've never really liked N because I always felt the correct process was to go to the town meeting, although I will tell you, I'll say something slanderous, I think town meetings are not democratic because very few people show up. Selectmen and finance committees orchestrated, and I was a selectman, I wasn't a finance committee, and we did orchestrate it. So it's also orchestrated, so.
Did you, Ford, is that going to be part of your town hall vote bench? Can I get a copy?
It's true, that's the way I see it. So I think that, you know, N, I think the right decision is not to do N, and I'm not sure I'll ever go towards that. But I will go if one of the towns says no. I think you do exactly what was in that second paragraph is you present to the MSBA the vote results, explain the district's understanding of the reasons for the failed vote, so I assume it's going to come out of one or two towns. So we're going to take those towns and we'll give them all the information on the towns and why they did the vote. And for example, I might even take a look at their attendance records at school committee meetings and their attendance records at building committee records, even if they maybe didn't even have somebody on them. So I think those are all the things that we're going to take a look at when we present that to the MSBA.
And then what? That's what I was going to ask.
Well, you're going to, the MSBA is going to have to make a decision. They're going to have to make a decision or we're going to proceed. But they're going to say, okay, Dover said no, and here are the reasons why Dover said no. So then we're going to have to sit down and say, what is our plan to rectify that? Well, we're going to sit down with Dover and deal with their questions and see if we can come together and go back. It sounds like we might be able to go back.
I mean, work on Dover and not go to 16 end?
I, yeah. I think we do exactly what we have here that the MSBA said we should do. So that's my own personal belief, though.
Do we know which town is Dover?
What?
Do we know which town is Dover?
No.
Which town is the one that?
Dover, let's just think of it.
No, I know, I know, you don't mean Dover. Which town is, needs that word?
I, we don't know.
Well, we will be done the 16 town meetings by, before May twenty-sixth.
I understand that, but we must have a sense of which town is.
I think that actually the answer to that is no, we don't know. I think that it is actually active in all the towns. Any town could go either way. I think that, I don't think that there's any town which I would say I strongly believe that they don't go no on it.
I think every town is going to go yes.
Yes.
But, you know, I think again, N is not the way to go. I don't think it may be ever, who knows? We've got to go through this town meeting and we've got to get this town meeting to yes. And I believe we're going to do that if the towns come to the table. If they don't have the information, they don't shoot from the hip, they don't say it's a bad investment, they come back and they sit down and try to.
And let me remind the committee that there is no motion on the table and allow this discussion, which is why we're not at the table, by the way, and allow the discussion to go on a little bit further because it's important. Jennifer?
My only comment is to totally agree with Alice. I think the wild card is the debt exclusion vote. You don't know who's going to show up at the election. Lancaster has a number of contested seats, which tends to bring out more people. Usually it's the same people who show up to vote for the non-contested election that show up to now town meetings even, but with a contested election, you know, contested seats, you don't know how people, who's going to vote, show up and how, whether they're going to know anything about it, and how do you share that information with people who don't care?
Mary Ellen?
So there's also on the back of this packet, well, you're going to get toward it on the start, it says title, Dover's position on Minute Man. I'm finally getting interested reading Jeff Wilson's response to a capital fee. So we're told that it's, we have to do it by law, it's a law, and that's not really clear when I read this, nor is what the capital fee is. So the other question that I have, which really is, it disturbs me and I have, this is in the back of this, why are these on the table? Why don't we receive them before we come to this meeting? So we look at them because if I can bring this up, I want it to work out.
Dave Portman?
Well, answer my question.
Why are they not at the table instead of the packet?
Why do you not receive these earlier? They were.
Which ones are you referring to?
I'm talking to these emails here, which are April sixth, which is well over, almost a week ago. There's no excuse for not having these.
Dr. McCullough, why were they not in the packet? Email on.
Jeff Wilson's received this morning or yesterday morning?
This is April sixth.
Packet had already gone out.
This is April sixth.
When did we? No, I have to look at each one. I'm sorry that they're not in the packet, but things happen over the course of the weekend.
The message from Jeff Wilson of David, yes, today.
See it today.
Yeah, all right, this first page here says April sixth.
That was my inquiry to him. His answer I provided to you at your seat.
September twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen.
That's part of the process. I'm giving you all my communications with the Department of Ed related to the capital fee issue.
Okay.
And if you read them all, you'll see why he responded when he did.
Yes, and I want to see on there, but these are also cash, they're not, they're also virtual, they're not incurred.
Well, I think that the inferiorness, the superintendent does not have to share his entire work product with us and ongoing issues that he does not feel fully resolved yet.
Okay, please.
Well, no, don't Jeff tease me, that's what I, how I feel about it.
And that's how I feel about it also.
Great, great. Dave Portman?
I know it's cool going after Dover and 16 and just kind of try to get that clarity in mind, that we could, that if there's a failure, I'm not kicking, I don't excuse anything.
There, there.
That we could conceivably come back as a school committee and say, here's, here's the plan we have, we'd like to do the MSBA review also. That, so if there are a couple of tenants, Dover and Lexington, they didn't pass it. We might say, let's work on Lexington and Dover and bring them more information and is it what we're going to do, we send that to them? No, so that's conceivable. Then Lexington and Dover would be asked to re-vote, I suppose. And then if they voted yes or they, then that's all the time. I'm just trying to think, trying to get clear in my head, in my head, what the options are. Is it some, a scenario, something like that, or is the only option 16 end? Or maybe we just say, roll over and put it back?
I can tell you my opinion on this, and it's only an opinion because there is no one procedure fits all on this issue as far as I know. My opinion is, is that if it fails at town meeting first, then it's probably dead. But depending on how it fails, there might be a strategy in which we can work with the MSBA to move forward. Now, it's very hard to envision the particulars of the situation to understand that. Let's say that, let's say that it passes everything except for one town, it failed the debt exclusion by one individual.
Well, we're not on that exclusion, let's just talk it out.
I'm giving you an example, I think that, let's say that, I'm just saying that, one, yeah. So I'm saying that the, that I think that you cannot say it is impossible to tell if you have a way forward if this fails. And if you do have a way forward, I think it's going to depend very much on the circumstances and the reason for the failure. So I don't think that it would be possible for us to speculate on a possible remedy, if a remedy is even possible, indeed, if the item fails. As far as I'm concerned, if it fails, we're probably over. If there's some unusual circumstances, there might be a way forward, but they can't speculate until you know the reason for the failure is right.
So 16A is not going to be a knee jerk reaction?
Absolutely not. And Carrie, she has to go next, because she's above.
Okay.
I'm going to turn into a pumpkin in about three minutes. Does the debt exclusion killing the, or turning it into a negative depends on how the town meeting motion was?
Motion is contingent.
If the motion is contingent, then the debt exclusion does reverse the vote from this to the other.
So I'm only going to, I'll give that.
I know, I do, I also wanted to say, talking about going back to the regional agreement amendment and the order in which the decision was brought, the committee that was working on that was very aware of the, of the two options that were allowed. It was a very deliberate choice that we, and I saw it as a commitment to go to town meeting where people would even consider going to the ballot, right? And everybody who was on that, on that task force position of the town meeting, because of the dialogue, because of the opportunity to discuss, because of the way you could take it to the hearing, that was the better, the better course to go on a decision of that magnitude, regardless of whether it was a representative town meeting or an open town meeting and who came and what committees supported or opposed. It was in general a more open discussion of the merits of the project. I also want to say, Jeff, you were talking about if we had done this in February, if we had done this, I think we have postponed through compromise. There was a clear path that we could have seen and we talked about, will we do this in September, will we do this in October, will we, you know, when will we do this? I think at each juncture, we have made a diligent decision based on what we knew on that day and the issues that had come to us as of that meeting. So I don't regret any of the decisions we have made, but we also have to own up to responsibility for the decisions that we did make along the way. And we now live with where we are and the time that we have left. And I remember asking, when we saw that letter from MSBA in that hundred and twenty days and the date was there, what does this mean? And it was not clear at that time what that meant. We know it now, you know, you read and you learn. And with that, I'm afraid I am out the door.
I'm only going to allow one or two more comments, but I'll use Dave next because he's been waiting for a while. waiting for a while.
Well, that's sort of interesting what Carrie just said, when you saw the memo last week. Is this the memo that you saw last week?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No, and then I'm talking about what we saw from MSBA, I believe it was in January, when we first saw the hundred and twenty days that took us into May, and we wondered how that related to the June thirtieth. But we don't know until, we didn't know until...
In January.
Until now.
You were working January.
We were aware of the difference of the, what is the significance of the hundred and twenty days versus the June thirtieth? Both of those were dates that had been given to Minuteman Administration and School Committee as dates by which some action had to be taken in terms of approval. We did not know until now, as far as I know, that the May twenty-sixth, is that the date, right? Um, takes precedence over the June thirtieth.
Thank you. Can I go on? Just so you know, I'm dead and I am recording. Um, the question I have is then, if sixteen N does come about, are then the six towns that have declared to leave, that have been approved to leave by the commission, are they involved in that voting?
Uh, well, if it happens before you leave, then it's, oh, you're still part of the district. You're not, you're not obligated to the debt.
I know.
But you're still involved in the vote until you physically leave the district in July of two thousand and seventeen.
And then we go back to what Carrie said about scrutiny of these, of the regional agreement and also this new school plan. And we've said here tens of times, probably adds up to a hundred times, that this needs to go before the towns and the board of selectmen, if not town meetings, for it to be vetted. And that did not and never took place until this special town meeting took place. And I, my personal opinion, as you are, as you would give yours, is that it is a ticket or leave it proposition. And we are now taking the towns, and six towns have said they're not gonna take anything if you want to help, and there may be one or two other towns that are gonna leave it.
Well, that is a relevant.
Thank you.
But an item on the agenda. Jennifer.
This has nothing to do with sixteen N. This is why, I'm actually sorry, I always come way on the left, but, um, this is about the, that last memo, and I understand why it didn't come to us until now, because before it was said we have no formula yet, so.
Right.
Um, the fiscal, the financing is predicated on a certain capital fee to non-district students, but according to this, that hasn't been set. How confident are we that it's going to be close?
Well, what we did was we took a look at the regulation, and we interpreted the regulation, uh, and based the calculation on that interpretation. We've always said that what will be set by D P S E, um, we've made that clear in our discussions, that it hasn't been formally set, that the analysis that we've been using is based on a number of assumptions, one of which is a capital fee. Um, what I think this is intended to communicate is, we've been hearing some feedback about whether a capital fee will really be imposed, will it be upheld, um, and what is the calculation? So I think what we've seen out of this is that D P S E is committed to work with MSBA and districts that utilize this capital fee in the calculation, but we've always said that we, we continue to work with D P S E, but it's our interpretation regulation. Okay, and I think that that will, obviously be talking about the way forward again in the future. We've had a long time to discuss this issue, if you'll hold on. Subcommittee reports, Alice, special policy, special question marks.
On point of order, should we take a vote to table?
No, we haven't, we haven't made a motion, so there's nothing to table yet.
Um, so moving on from this, we got the building, which is for the kids, to a discussion about policies related to student health. So that's, that's pretty nice.
It's pretty polite.
Um, we've got four policies, um, in the packet, and these came to us, and we were originally looking at financial policies, but, um, the, the school districts, we had to use the four policies, and they were originally looked at in two thousand, and now they improved in two thousand and nine, so this is quite a wide spectrum. Trying to take them up again anyway. And the first one is EBDA. Um, you have in the packet the current policy, and then on the reverse side, you have, um, the copy showing the changes that would be made, first event, or first reading. So, um, if you look at your, the current policy, they're noticed, many representatives to their Board of Health, and it doesn't say what Board of Health, you know, if, if we were, um, we were getting a lot of policies done all at once at that time, and we didn't have the time to really go through them carefully. So this one has been done all over by the school. And, um, and Amy, the Fed Director, who is here, thank you. And, um, so, does anyone have any comments? We, actually, I did not receive any comments. Liz, did you get any comments? No, so there have been no comments actually, by any means.
My only comment is, Alice, is that, um, the paragraph that says, "No public school teacher, but a, a, shall be liable," that's not like legally funded, like that, because the law is the law, and this states our policy, so we don't think that there's gonna be legally, um...
I think the language is in other policies, so.
The same language is in other policies.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just saying, it's nice to be here, but I'm not sure how much protection it gives somebody in, in our leadership.
I, I don't know. My guess is that it would cover, since school would have all the liable, that school would probably cover it.
Right, so, okay.
So they wouldn't be liable.
Sharon.
I remember from education, the professor said that schools don't say, but maybe people sign these waivers, but in fact, it could, if teachers are doing things, we got to trust them, like, why? It's very, that's the law. So, so I think this is accurate.
She wasn't, did you visit first reading, or?
Um, sure, and then Dave actually has had first, so. Um, do you wanna make a motion? I'll take a look. First reading? Okay, ready, second? Second, second from Sharon, go ahead, Dave.
My question was at the, uh, at the bottom, either case, the last paragraph, as required by N I A regulations, a physician is contracted, and the expenses should be paid by the school company. I was trying to relate it to what could be for in that paragraph, and it looks like, because it, I don't know what it relates to, but contracted, why? Is it saying, is that necessary to say what that person does? Actually, I see that, uh, we have, like, events, we have this, we will require a certified athletic trainer, nurse, the E N T, but I didn't see, I'm trying to figure out how they, how that related, the position related to the sentence.
Yeah, that's a good point. Um, well, we can, we can take it back in the first.
I was wondering if you're, so like, football game, do the physician require to be there? Like, you know, contact sports, I just wondered. That was, that was the only thing, that policy that jumped out, that jumped out, that I looked at, so.
Well, that's a, that, of course, um, you, the question, I think.
Okay.
Still, we can still prove the first reading.
Yeah.
Is there a comment for, I think there's things that is a comment, Alice.
Oh, yes, hi, Al. Um, and this is following up on Jeff's comment and, and Jennifer's as well, but that paragraph, it says, "No public school teacher," etc., would be liable. I mean, it, it's sort of is like an implicit indemnity clause. So I guess the question is, did anybody talk about providing explicit indemnity clause? If not, why not? Because it's not gonna stop somebody from suing this teacher. And then what will happen is the teacher's lawyer will waive this and say, this school would basically be indemnified. And you can see that happening. What happens is that you then have two parties for lawsuits, which runs up to legal fees, and until they figure out that, yeah, there's really only one pocket here, it's the school. So I guess the question is, in an effort to head off legal fees that might arise from an ambiguity, did anybody talk about whether you wanna give express indemnity clause? And if you haven't, you might wanna talk to counsel about that.
I wonder if there's another policy we have that says that.
Okay. Uh, any other comments about this one? Those kids can now take dedications on their own, is that right? Um, it actually, it was there before, so it's not a priority.
I have that same question, but it shows up in our fourth policy.
Oh, is that what happens? They're looking for it.
Which one, this?
No, that's not, all right. The, the one about students taking their own test.
But they can or can't?
It shows up in the later policy.
Yeah, okay, I had, I should have that.
J L C D.
Okay, so there's, um, questions about the last two paragraphs, really, that's, that's a lot of questions. I would prefer to take this back and do another third one, or you can't.
Not accepted for first reading.
Which one, the one with the top?
EBDA, people don't like taking it off the...
Who made the motion?
I'll draw it in.
And the second one, very well in the motion.
Okay, so that one's going back to the table. Um, Sharon, J L C, Student Health Services and Requirements. All right, this is a long one, and, um, N A S C has a recommended policy, so if you look at page ninety-seven, that's the recommended one from the J L C, and the J L C, Student Health Services and Requirements, page ninety-five and ninety-six, um, it is adaptive policy. Um, it is a new policy, it has a new policy, and a child, and a student policy, and a student health. Dave.
I'm not sure if it has to deal with J L C or if it does with J L C C, uh, which is communicable disease, but I was looking, looking for something that talked about, for instance, what I wrote down for J L C C, I put H I B, H I B, which of course, knowing that students don't need to report to their family. But what that brought up some years ago was that everybody in the school, meaning nurse and, and teachers, practice, I think they're called universal precautions, in other words, the way you treat every child, and the way you handle every child, you, you put where it was, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I'm wondering if that's, is something, if you, if, if, if there needs something in the policy that talks about that, so that teachers know that, and all staff members know that, or even students, if they, if someone in their class is bleeding, they should not touch, they should not go after the blood and clean it up themselves without gloves or something? Because you never know, you don't know what the...
I believe we have a policy that deals with that, it's also described in the student handbook.
Does it need to be imperable?
No, there's a separate policy for it, I mean.
You know, chat.
I don't follow that.
Or is it, is it a J policy?
I don't know.
I'll see if I can find it. Do you have the...
I'm very confident we have it already.
Um, I'm not certain about the policy, but in reading what is here, I can tell you that we have an emergency teachers handbook, that they have medical emergency response plan, and that these are procedural things.
Okay.
Typically, we don't, in the policy, talk about specifics.
I understand.
The level of, um, you know, whether or not the teacher is wearing gloves, that's really more of a...
Are you working, are you still working with the nurse on some of these?
Yes.
You might ask her.
Absolutely.
Where it is, just so we know, because that, I think that's a, I heard that this is very important, it doesn't, whether it belongs here or someplace else, but that it's, that it is, it is somewhere so people know about it.
All right, so that, to me, it's a procedural thing.
Yeah, that's okay. I, I don't need to, need to move it into a policy that's already a procedural, but just, I'm wondering if it really is in the procedures, so that, and how it gets, uh...
Okay, I will, I will ask for somebody to get us an answer on that.
Okay. You don't say that email, Alice, just, you know, when you go...
Well, I, I think it's a great, very important factor, everybody's, it's a parameter.
So I don't think that this policy is yet to go to the table, the first reading, right?
Okay.
Move to first reading. Second. Right.
And second.
I have only one, uh, comment on this, in the fourth paragraph, when it says, "Services for personnel responsible for school health and athletics," is that you referring to school personnel responsible?
I'm just reading what you're reading.
Um, consult of services for personnel responsible.
There's, there's...
So which personnel are we referring to?
Perfect question. There's a certain, and this is the best part, the policy.
So I read this sentence like four times, and the language is a little bit chunky, but trying to understand the meaning of it, I might, I believe me.
That's just...
Oh, I was gonna, I know that, I know that. I saw that, you know, school, like, school is, it's, it's...
I think it should be explicit, but also make it sensible, easy to read, unless chunky is the word.
Yes, it's, yes, all right, well, we'll try to, you know what, we'll get N A S C to direct, uh, this directly out of their board of...
Yeah.
Yep.
A lot of...
Yeah. Okay, um, aside from getting information on the norms and the, um, using paragraph four, um, are we ready to approve this with, with something coming back on paragraph four? Uh, we'll be, we'll be, um, are we ready to vote on that?
We will.
Um, may we make a motion on the table?
Jim, you may, Mr. Lemon.
It's eleven, that's good. Okay, so, uh, so the clarification in paragraph four also may clarify your, quite the question about the physician, if the athletic thing of the first... Yeah, the, the physician thing, you know, it's a very old question, and, um, we leave it in there so that it gets discussed, actually.
Would like to put J L C C on the table for first reading.
Oh, if this is meaningful, we'll just...
Put you J L C C. You can get it back for...
That's my, my second to Sharon. Okay, so, uh, the current one is on the front, and the revisions are in the back. And we'll see that, um, basically, this was all directly out of state law, um, and, uh, it has been revised considerably. And it also talked about the Board of Health, like, the...
Good point.
Um, Jack?
Um, sounds on the second deleted paragraph, the, the first added paragraph, the second paragraph of the communicable disease, it says, "A student who exhibits symptoms may be temporarily excluded." The language in the deleted second paragraph, with the exception of, I think, the last sentence, which is crazy, that seems stronger. And I was curious as to why we were kind of making it less strong than it had been.
Okay, so I can't speak for this clinic, but I can't say that the deleted section refers to disease dangerous to the public. And the, the section you're talking about is about communicable disease, which is a much broader, um, kind of...
But wouldn't it seem that, that, and I understand you're not speaking for the nurse, wouldn't it seem that the first two sentences of that, the leading second paragraph, are important to the school? If somebody is exhibiting signs of a disease that's dangerous to the public, wouldn't we want that person sent home immediately?
Um, I, um, I cannot speak for the nurse. I don't know whether this Fed Director, Amy, do you wanna speak to this one?
Can you tell me where you're located?
Page one hundred.
Oh, I have my own call. On the, the proposed amendment?
Uh, yes, on the, the amended language for communicable diseases.
Okay.
There are three deleted paragraphs at the bottom of that page.
Yep.
The first two sentences of the second deleted paragraph seem pretty important to me, and I was curious as to why we were eliminating that.
According to the nurse, it's a little bit redundant, because... According to the nurse, it's a little bit redundant because above it, it says, in the first paragraph, a student who exhibits symptoms of a communicable disease may be temporarily excluded from school. I think that she says her, the way she explained it to me is that it was redundant. That they follow Massachusetts Department of Public Health guidelines.
Now, as Alice just explained, there is a difference between communicable and something that's dangerous to the public. It would seem to be that the, the lead in the language.
So it also in that sentence says, or shall be referred to a school physician who may direct the child to be sent home. And the school nurse would, her words, because I have this, the school nurse would dismiss without, dismiss a student home without having to refer to the school physician as well.
And, and they are referring to the Massachusetts Department of Health guidelines and then following. So they're, they're referring to another document, basically.
I think it covers everything. If the kid walked in with mumps, which is happening in the Boston area. That's, that's a, a public health danger, child to send home. But I think it's covered.
Yeah, it's mentioned, it's referring to another, another governing document. Is that all of you?
Yeah, I think it, it, those things were covered. Seems like it's less strong.
She's got discretion. Yeah, there's going to be circumstances.
It just doesn't repeat what the state laws have.
Yeah, you really have to give some new way to, to professionals in acting and local careers because sometimes the situation where they would send a child to is not a better, a better solution. Perhaps, you know, isolation is better. You don't, can't make that decision at the school committee table. So any other comments about this one? Is everybody otherwise comfortable with it? Okay, so all in favor of JLCC as amended for first reading? It's unanimous, a loving case, well, suspension, no, no votes. Hang on, I gotta write it down. Okay, the next one is the administration of patients to students. So you all get in the only book in MASC and talks about policy, right? Everybody gets that flyer? Okay, so this one was a subject of a recent flyer. And also, if you go on the MASC website, you can log in as a number of MASC. You can go read all of their draft or like policies. It's, it's not something I expect to all to run rank. But it is really quite interesting to see how many of them are never be updated. So we should give ourselves a pat on the back for doing the updates. And then also, just bear in mind that recently, there's been quite a lot of news about voluntary addition. And the, the policy that MASC had sent around to all the school committee members talked about giving permission to administer Narcan.
Yeah.
MASC also held a forum in Worcester in the fall, which was attended by seventy-three, seventy-four people. It was all day, they had a lot of speakers about the kinds of problems that are seen not at Minuteman. That tells me there's, there's not been this kind of problem at Minuteman. But it is occurring in other school districts and as a result, there's a lot of schools which are stocking Narcan trained staff with Minister Narcan. So with that in mind, the proposed new policy that is recommended here does not refer to the administration of Narcan. The MASC policy that's printed on the back is an outdated version. The one that's currently on your website was written in January of twenty sixteen and does include a recommendation that the school district may stock nasal Narcan and train medical personnel, first responders may administer to individuals experiencing a life-threatening opioid overdose in school setting. So the one that we're looking at, JLCD recommended, actually doesn't talk about Narcan. And it's, it's really a very, it's a policy level decision as to whether you want to go with the MASC version or you want to go with this revised version of the older MASC language. The school nurse is recommending the, this one isn't a packet. She doesn't want the Narcan?
So the proposed one for Narcan, and I went over with this with her again today so that I could have a good understanding to explain it to you. That first paragraph that says the school district may, conjunction with school personnel, we do have Narcan at Minuteman. It's prescribed by our consulting physician. And the school nurse can administer it if she needs to in life-threatening situations. So that paragraph we do have, we can put that in. The second paragraph, her, her thought on that was if the school district wishes medical personnel to train non-medical staff in the administration of nasal Narcan, she was, she talked to the person at the Department of Public Health in charge of schools on Saturday, she was at some conference. That gets a little bit more tricky. The only way that non-medical staff can administer it in those situations is if the actual student has their own prescription. And it says that they can do that. So it gets much more complicated. It's kind of like an EpiPen type thing. The nurse can give an EpiPen to anybody, but the non-medical trained personnel can only give it to people who actually have the prescription. So that's how she explained it. According to her, she, that was not her understanding.
And I just, I want to make a general comment. This rules and laws that have just been passed around Narcan and opioids, opioids have really not run through the channels that these kinds of things normally run through with the Department of Education, with the Association of School Superintendents, with the Association of School Principals. We've not been given much guidance at all on how the nuances of the new laws are to be implemented in school. So I would ask the school committee either to table this until we get more of that. We haven't even talked about it at an executive team meeting because it's so new. And none of us have gone to any training on, on it or informational sessions on how it's to be practically implemented. So I would, you know, urge real caution here and we don't want to be a test case for anything, especially around these policies.
I would like a member to put the revised proposed new policy adaptive from MASC, JLCD on the table for acceptance for first reading.
I don't have the Narcan one. No, it's, it's something that was mailed to your house. I have an obsessive collection of these things that I. When I was reading through this, I just thought, you know, somebody has a stupid number of this group committee who reads those flyers might ask the question, what about Narcan? And I read it and I wondered what about Narcan? And we had this conversation for email, what about Narcan? So to bring it to your attention because it's our responsibility to know.
Hi, Alice, my only concern with this policy is that in the last sentence of the first paragraph, I'm not a hundred percent sure what limited delegation means in this sentence. The school committee shall also register for limited delegation for field trips in short term.
I can speak to that. That is a Department of Public Health thing, training, if you will, that the nurse participates in. So she is, she registers with the Department of Public Health and then she's able to delegate certain things to other people.
So limited delegation is a technical term that they use?
Correct.
But the reader of this policy may not understand that. So I'm wondering if maybe we should have a sentence of explanation instead of just using the technical term. Because I kind of figured out what it meant. But it may not be obvious. And my other comment actually is for the principals. Would you please give regards of the school committee to the teachers and the staff? Because we understand all the sorts of things that they have to deal with. We're talking about administering Narcan and maybe students who have their own prescriptions, something like that and whatnot. We understand that you guys have to deal with these complicated issues on a day-by-day basis and the general public probably does not completely understand all the different issues that, that as a teacher also I have to deal with in the classroom. It's just absolutely unbelievable that we have to talk about this sort of stuff at a school committee meeting and yet it's absolutely necessary.
I'll just follow up on Ed's statement though. The implementation is still a question, but to ease people's minds, the nurse is not the only one certified to give it. I'm certain I went to a training, I can give Narcan, we're going to straighten out that process. Mr. Tilsie is certified to give it and Vince could probably tell you truth from a legal standpoint. If she wasn't here, we'd be able to solve the problem and follow with a Good Samaritan act, something where it happens, so. She's not the only one certified.
Now, I'm wondering, it says that staff can be trained in, well, my question is, can students, are students covered to carry ephedrine, or EpiPens under sentence one? I think, I even know elementary kids who carry EpiPens.
Well, it actually says. Oh, I see what you're saying.
As long as it's not excluded, like, I'm surprised it wasn't, I was a little surprised it wasn't mentioned under, under one, two, three. But as long as it's, it's not excluded, but like.
It's not, if you look, if you look at the first paragraph, it's actually the worst.
I saw that, but it doesn't talk about training other people to administer them. I think that's what I got from a, a student, a student here herself.
No, I think that language was just taken from the mask policy. But I do, I can check with the nurse and report back, but I do believe that students can carry their own EpiPen.
Yeah, if it's covered under sentence one, I have no issue with that. I, I just know from experience that some kids carry their own and are allowed to.
Yes, that's true. I think we should have this one come back.
So you don't want to vote on that one either?
Well, I mean.
I can vote for first reading. I'd say first reading.
I would suggest that we do add, at least what the nurse suggested, for the trained personnel, just like for the EpiPen, for the trained personnel to be able to administer Narcan.
I'll just add that one.
Yeah. So at least start there, so it's in the policy.
It's the school district may conjunction with.
Since we have trained personnel, we're there. But at least it's in the policy and then as everything gets evolved with the new laws.
How does you get, Narcan get administered, is it a no objection?
No drives.
No drives.
All right, so Narcan paragraph, that's going to come back then because we haven't seen it.
Right.
I mean, you have always grown like a flyer, but you don't have. Okay, so. All right, so that'll come back.
Thank you, Alice, it's a lot of work.
Yeah, well.
Very painful work.
The process for this particular step was a rocky process. It was not a satisfactory process and I hope to have a better process for the next.
And that concludes the policy submission, that part. Very good. Dave Morton, Superintendent Negotiation and Evaluation Subcommittee, Mid-Cycle Evaluation Summary and Next Steps.
Also like to mention that Jennifer Leoni and Dave O'Conner were also a member of that committee. What you have in front of you, or in your packet, I should say, are copies of evaluations and comments made by all sixteen members of the school committee. We wanted to give you an opportunity to comment on, comment on and raise questions if you wish. And then we would afford Ed the same opportunity to, if he has, has any comments about what he read and what they mean to him. And then after we do that, I'll tell you a couple of next steps.
I have no comments.
So if any school committee members have any comments or questions about the mid-cycle evaluation, what's written in it? Not about what's coming next. Okay, what is coming next is that at, at the Navy, the, the, the tokening members asked Ed to provide at the, at the Navy, information or data to what was act, what he had actually achieved under each goal. This is a lot of, as an example, a lot of staff members went to conferences in New Orleans. How did that, how does that translate to what is, what might be going on in the school? What, what is impact, what's the impact of that? Not just what, the meetings occurred, let's say, but what, what happened as a result. Another example of how many Moore's students have had, have filled out applications than, than last year, if that's true. In other words, real results and the impacts of the goals that he set that were resulted of initiatives undertaken for each goal. So at the Navy, Ed will present that as part of the sum of evaluation. And then our, our committee, our subcommittee will caucus if you wish, you have a need, to look at it and then come back to you to this school, to the school committee with a recommendation as to whether or not per his contract that we recommend a raise for the FY seventeen, that's his new contract, his third year of his contract. So that's where we are at this point. Anyone have any questions about the process?
Yeah, I just want to ask about the, during the evaluations, before we get his feedback on where he is in terms of meeting his goals.
Oh, we wouldn't. He'd have, he's going to have the data by the Navy.
Oh, we're into the evaluations.
That's a, that's mid-cycle, middle.
So that, that one?
We'll do a five, end of year final or summative evaluation.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
That's okay. So that's what, I'm telling you, we wanted a, a real impact and part there as to what was achieved under the goals. And to have that information by the Navy, the, take home these of this and then via SurveyMonkey fill out the, the slide for the evaluation. I think, okay. That's it.
Secretary's report, Dave Horton is on again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I couldn't have said that on myself. I didn't get any comments from anyone. And Ms. Yudik, I don't think you can either follow me.
Okay.
You have to take both. All in favor of the motion on the table? That would be, how many of us are left? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten? Eleven in favor, one abstention. Are you in favor? This is, oh, you're an abstention. Eleven in favor, one abstention, no nays, passes. Before we have a motion to adjourn, I just have one brief comment. It's April twelve. When, when is our next meeting?
May seventeen.
Did I say any more? I'll see you on May seventeen, which is after the May fifteenth date. So. Your last work, your last work, it comes down to these four weeks, four or five weeks. And I'll see you then.
If I may, it comes down to three weeks because the last town meetings at which Minuteman dead article will be on the warrant. Take place on May second.
Yes.
Well, that's true.
And some of the votes.
Oh, is it Lancaster, is it so I made that?
No, no, no. But if the dediculus doesn't pass, the whole thing will be passed, so.
All right.
So it could go all the way to May fifteen. Actually, is what it could, okay? And on that, I'm.
But I, I second your remarks very clearly.
Right, this is it. Motion for adjournment, please.
Motion for adjournment?
Second. Goodbye. Can you count that time?